All right. Welcome, everybody, to the Committee of the Whole, Belvidere City Council Committee of the Whole, January 24th meeting. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Burton?
Here.
Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Mahal?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Ten present?
Okay, thank you. And we have Captain Burdick here tonight for representing the Fire Department. Captain, welcome. We don't have any public forum?
No.
Nobody else with a public comment?
No.
Reports of officers, boards, and special committees. Item one, public safety unfinished business. Excuse me. We have none. Public safety new business. We have item A, B, C, all belonging to Chief Woody, Police Department. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item A, the update for the Police Department since the last time that I provided an update. December 19th, the department handled a triple homicide in the 600 block of Union Avenue. Since then, we were able to arrest a Huntley man for those murders, and the investigation is ongoing. Last Monday, January 17th, the department investigated a single car accident at Fairgrounds in Van Buren. The driver and sole occupant had a medical emergency, caused them to drive off the roadway, ultimately was transported to the hospital and pronounced dead at the hospital. Update regarding K-9 Shep. K-9 Shep had surgery on his left leg, putting a new ligament in that leg, and also a plate holding the ligament together. Since then, Shep unfortunately has been battling infection after infection. His progress has kept him from being able to rehab the leg properly. He's required around-the-clock care and numerous medications. The infection in the left leg wasn't healing. Rounds of antibiotics were not effective, which required Shep to have surgery to remove the plate in the left leg in an attempt to remove the cause of the infection. It's possible that Shep could require removal of the plate in the right leg if the infection continues. Since the second surgery, Shep hasn't been able to do any rehab for either leg. There is a possibility that once healed, Shep may not be operational as a working K-9. The command staff is looking at all the city's options and will monitor Shep's health over the next few weeks. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, and I'll field any questions that you may have.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Chief regarding any of those updates? I know, Chief, we had went to what's really one of the best facilities, at least around here, UW Madison Veterinary School Clinic. Certainly was, am hopeful, was hopeful, and disappointed to hear that, obviously, Shep isn't doing well. But I guess time will tell the rest of the story, so appreciate the update on that. And does anybody else have any questions or comments for Chief? Okay. Chief, item B?
If you'll turn to the motion in your packet to accept a donation, be advised that the Belvidere Police Department has received a donation from Paul and Dorothy Hale in the amount of $100. I'd request a motion to accept a donation of $100, check number 4364, from Paul and Dorothy Hale, to be used for this year's annual department meeting.
Okay. Do we have a motion of that effect? Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderman Porter. Any questions, any comments, any concerns? I will say, I've known Mr. and Mrs. Hale for, since 1970, I think, and they've lived there for many, many years. Very nice people. So if they're watching, I appreciate it. Thank you, Paul and Dorothy Hale. Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed. Chief?
Okay, moving on. C, if you turn to the motion in your packet titled SWAT vehicle equipment request. Mr. Mayor and council attached to this memorandum is a quote sheet for modifications by SWAT mod to the armored SWAT vehicle, request to replace or add to following equipment, including labor. Heavy-duty lower bumper to protect the armored vehicle. Guard will protrude low enough to allow the team to block vehicles without the vehicle being able to maneuver underneath the armored vehicle. Also presents, prevents the armored vehicle from going up and over the front or rear of the vehicle. SWAT mod would have to fabricate this bumper at a cost of $3,440. Just to add to that, currently, without the bumper, the vehicle sits about 36 inches or three feet high. With the fabricated bumper, it would sit about 12 inches high. Number two, request to replace stock halogen headlights with upgraded LED headlights. The LED would be far brighter and offer greater range of illumination at a cost of $470. Number three, application of vinyl decals on front and rear on both sides of the vehicle at a cost of $1,940. And number four, current vehicle tires have dry rot. Request to replace the four vehicle tires with used tires in excellent condition, including O-rings and valve stems if needed, at a cost of $4,880. I would request a motion to approve the expenditure to SWAT mod for the necessary modifications and equipment in the amount of $10,730. This expenditure will be taken from the Belvidere Police Department Federal Asset Forfeiture Account.
Thank you, Chief. Do we, motion by Alderman Snow, we have a second by Alderwoman Mahal. Any discussion, any questions? Alderman Snow first, and...
So, in looking at the pictures of the vehicle when it's sitting like in a warehouse, it looks like it's got some spotlights up toward the top of the roof on each corner. Is that part of the headlight assembly as well as far as LED, or is that already LED?
That picture truly is just an example of what the modification would look like. That is not going to be the vehicle. I just took a stock photo off their website just to give you a frame of reference on how low that's going to sit, and in comparison to the other photos, which are actually our armored vehicle without any type of bumper fabrication. So I just wanted to give you a comparison.
Okay. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So, Chief, when we first allocated money for this, we gave you $76,219 for upgrades. Part of that was for the emergency lighting consisting of eight red flashers and eight blue flashers mounted respectively on the front and rear vehicles. 16 lights total, extremely bright LEDs with over 20 patterns for $2,700. That didn't include the headlights?
No, ma'am. That would be emergency lighting that they would add in addition. What I'm requesting this evening would be for the headlights specifically themselves.
Okay. And then, we also gave $9,925 for sandblasting, sanding, taping, light bodywork, application of matte black paint to the entire vehicle, including door jambs, undercarriage rims, and roof. And they offered a complimentary blue line if requested. Did we get that done? Is this vehicle black right now, and we're just looking to decal it?
That's correct. Actually, the color end up being a matte green as opposed to black. But what I'm requesting this evening would be the decals to go on top of the paint job itself. That's a Belvidere Police Rescue, things of that nature, would not consist of the paint job or anything that is associated with the paint job itself.
You're welcome, thank you. Alderwoman Prather?
Chief Woody, could you refresh our memories again as to what the federal asset forfeiture account is and how that comes into being?
Yes. So, currently, we have a task force officer at the DEA office over in Rockford. They investigate long-term narcotics violations, and ultimately, when drug asset forfeiture or drug funds are seized through that program, our department has allocated a certain percentage of that, which then is awarded by the federal government to the Belvidere Police Department, and then ultimately has to be utilized by statute.
So, this actually isn't taxpayer-funded?
No, not at all. This is funds that were seized from drug dealers.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right. Hearing none, then, we have a motion and a second to approve the expenditure to SWAT mod for the necessary modifications and equipment in the amount of $10,730. This expenditure will be taken from the Belvidere Police Department Federal Asset Forfeiture Account. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed, thank you. Chief, is that it?
That was it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, moving along here. Item three, finance and personnel unfinished business, we have none. Item four, finance and personnel new business. Under item A, Finance Department, for an update from Ms. Shannon Hanson. Shannon?
Thank you. I just have one mention. You have in front of you tonight a budget review schedule as we start to look at what fiscal year '23 will look like, so you do have that schedule in front of you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Hanson. And moving along, item five, under other, we have item A, the OSHA mandate, which was tabled January 10th, 2022. City Attorney, do you have, I know we had chatted about this, but can I get your thoughts on this?
Sure can. So, as many of you know, I think we've discussed it briefly, since it was tabled, the Supreme Court issued an additional stay upon the OSHA mandate, meaning it's delayed further from implementation. It's still working its way through lower courts, of course. The court's decision, the Supreme Court's decision gives a pretty indication how they might rule if it does make it up that far, but right now, it's working its way through the courts. So the stay is back in effect. Illinois, OSHA has also issued a statement that because the stay is in effect at the federal level, they will not be implementing the mandate at this time. So I think it would be appropriate to first remove the, well, we could do one of two things, Mr. Mayor. We could either just leave it tabled forever until we find out what happens. Alternatively, in order to clean up our agenda, and probably, we always bring it back later, is to bring it off the table and either have the movement and second agree to withdraw the motion second, or simply vote it down, one of the two.
All right. I think I would rather see it brought off the table and then voted on accordingly, and if it changes in the future, then we'll have it back in front of the council, so we could, so could we get a motion to take this off the table? Motion by Alderwoman Prather, second by Alderman McGee. Any discussion regarding that? No? Okay. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Okay. Motion to bring it off the table, and I guess we could have a motion to pass.
There was already a motion to pass, I believe.
Alderman Stevens, second by Alderman Prather.
Yeah, I would recommend, I know I said either bring it off the table and vote it down, or simply withdraw the motions. I would not recommend passing this at this point, because this would be a mandatory subject bargain with our unions, because it's not being imposed by state statute, by a rule from OSHA or anybody else. It would be a change in the terms and conditions of work, and we would have to negotiate that with the unions. So at this point, I would not suggest passing this policy. We'll wait and see what OSHA does.
Okay. So with that being said, then, we have a motion already existing from Alderman Stevens, and a second by Alderman Prather. Make it real clean. Alderman Stevens, would you care to withdraw your motion?
No.
No?
Overall, no.
Okay. All right. Do we have any other questions? Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. All right. Motion fails?
Again, if somehow this survives Supreme Court scrutiny down the road, I'll bring it back to you.
And then, we also, moving along, we have item 5B, Nycor Nextsite. We had a Mr. Branch on TV regarding the Nycor Nextsite retail possibility that he had presented. There were a couple different options regarding that, and if you don't mind, I would like Gina to comment on that.
I was able to obtain the PowerPoint presentation that Mr. Branch gave us last week, so that was in front of your seats tonight for those that couldn't attend the meeting. So as a quick recap, basically, the company can run analytics that staff can't. You know, we don't have the time or the computer programs, the software, to do it. And then they take those analytics and use that to pitch to retail hotels, restaurants, stuff like that, to help them locate to Belvidere. It's a good time for stuff like that, now that more and more companies are allowing employees to work from home. People aren't tied to living where they work, and you're going to see a lot of shifting of where people live, because they have more freedom, which means now restaurants and retailers are going to have to follow their customer base around, because that's going to be shifting. So, lots of potential in the future. There are two different pricing packages, and again, because we are a Nycor community, we get a reduced pricing package. The standard option is a minimum of a three-year agreement, and of course, I would always recommend taking the minimum, especially the first time doing something, because we're still testing it out, and that is $25,000 flat rate a year. The other option is a minimum three-year agreement for $15,000 for a flat rate, and then they have what's called success fees, which is basically a commission. So if they bring in a restaurant, that's $4,500 commission. A $10,000 square foot tenant, $7,500. A $50,000 or less square foot tenant, $15,000. A hotel would be $25,000. So there's pros and cons. One, with the flat $25,000 for three, you know, three years for a total of 75, you know what you're paying, and you hope they're successful. For the second one that's on the success fee, if it doesn't work, you're not out as much money. If they are successful, then you could end up paying a little bit more. On the plus side, if they're more successful than we anticipate, we're just getting that much more sales tax and property taxes, so it would offset the fee. One thing Mr. Branch did point out is that typically, there is no development. They don't charge a success fee until that business is opened. So they don't charge a success fee because they land a lease or a land contract, or the developer comes and talks to staff. It's not until the business is actually open. And that can take a year, year and a half, because first, they have to run the analytics, they have to market, they have to make the connections. Then we have to go with either lease agreements or purchasing properties. Then you have to go for building permits for new construction or remodels. You know, that all takes time. Stuff like that doesn't happen overnight. So that first year and a half, you're not going to get an open business, because all that background work is done. So I'd say that first year, you're pretty much guaranteed that cheaper rate of $15,000. It would be the second and third years is where we'd end up paying the success fees. But again, if it's more successful, we're going to get the retail, the sales tax, the property taxes to offset it versus the standard $25,000. Also, personal opinion, if they're working more on a commission basis, that's giving them more incentive to work harder. You know, if they're just getting the $25,000, no matter what happens, that's less incentive than if we're paying them per success story. It kind of lights that fire a little bit more for them. So those would be the two breakdowns. Pros and cons to each side, but I would say the success fee for the three-year contract may be the most beneficial at this point.
Okay. Thank you, Gina. Alderman Flurry, then Alderman Porter?
Thank you. And Gina, you may not know the answer to this, because obviously, you're not the Nextsite folks, but you know, in regards to the success fee one, so you know, for our third year of our contract, and they, right at the end of it, you know, they are able to land a different company, but it takes a year and a half for them to open, do they still get their success fee after our term is up, or once that three years is up, whatever happens after that, there wouldn't be a success fee?
It's my understanding it's not till the business opens, because at any point, something could happen. The economy could tank, the company could file bankruptcy, there could be a big shortage. I mean, you know, as we've noticed in the last 20 years, it can be a fickle thing, so they don't charge it until the doors actually open. Now, I imagine if they're in the middle of stuff, they're going to use that to try to convince us to sign another three-year agreement to continue that momentum, and then at that point, City Council can reassess everything.
Thank you.
Alderman Porter?
Okay, Gina, so the success fee is not a certain percentage, then it's a set amount depending on what the business is, is that correct?
Correct. They range from $4,500 to $25,000. $25,000 would be multi-family hospitality, healthcare, senior housing, like very large, large impact developments. And then $4,500 would be your restaurants, fast food type stuff. It's a set amount, not a percentage, so there's really no guessing game of what we'll end up paying them.
Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So, this is basically a professional marketing firm that will just like market Belvidere to bring retail business here, right?
Correct. It is, they run analytics software that they look at daytime population. So you know, a lot of businesses, they look at census data. If you don't meet their bare minimum on the census, you're out. So they're the ones that go in and say, oh, don't, you know, I know the census says this, but because of the fairgrounds, their daytime population on weekends is actually this amount. Because of the schools, their daytime population is this amount. And then they can, they have software, and they can run analytics that show where all the commuter traffic is. So one example he gave is that there was a Jewel Osco, and they got, they showed Jewel Osco, most of your customer base actually lives over here. You're just hitting them on the way home from work. So if you open up a second location in there, your customers are already built in, and they'll go there on the weekends and not just Monday through Friday, and you're, you know. So they run those kind of analytics to help market, and they go to conventions, you know, nationwide, where they schmooze with the retailers and developers, and obviously, they have ones that they have a history with, which is just stuff that staff doesn't have the capability of doing.
Alderman Snow?
Um, so if it's in the enterprise zone, we don't get the full property taxes for five years. So if it's enterprise zone versus non-enterprise zone property, the, it's different, and you know, your taxes are based on value of construction, so it would be how large is the building, how, you know, fancy is it, to see what the assessed value is. And the sales tax, again, it's depends on their business level, but I would say $4,500, you should make that in sales tax easily within the first year. I mean, I'm not, that would just be my guess based on other things I've seen. So it shouldn't be like a long-term recap, or it's going to take like 15 years to see, you know, the payback on that. I would say it would be within a year or two.
Continue.
Well, I think from the way, I think the public, at least my understanding, from what the public thinks about it, is that we've often heard about, why don't we have one of these, why don't we have one of these, why don't we have one of these? And nothing, the old saying, nothing ventured, nothing gained, you know? If we don't try and do a little bit better, we're probably not going to do a little bit better. I do think that this company has a record of success, and you know, depending on where the venture is at, we still have the fact that they're not going to build it if they don't think they can make money. The more they make, then the more revenue stream we have. Not only that, but the more businesses or retail businesses that we can line up in key spots like we have been trying to do, and I think we are going to be able to do it here, then the better it is for attracting other business down the road. So, you know, I'm not saying that we have to do it. I think it's a, something I wanted to look at. I think we could, this company can do a better job of marketing, and they do a better job. That's their business. So, I will agree with, I do agree with Gina. I think that part of me says that you pay the $15,000 a year, and then you base it on success. They have incentive that way. It's always nice to have an incentive, and then we reap the rewards of how successful they are. So Alderman Snow?
And I don't disagree. I just want to, when the question comes up from whomever that we've taken that look, and we're, we are making the investment in the community to perpetuate the growth and have a reasonable expectation, just wanting to take a look at it.
What?
It's not a make or break by any stretch.
Right. No, I would hope, I would hope that's the case. I'm optimistic, or I would have never, never brought this to the council, but it's up to the council what they think. Alderman Flurry?
Thank you. All right, just one more question, maybe go too far with the what-ifs, but say we have Company A, Company B. So Company A is negotiated by Nextsite, but then Company B catches wind that this place is moving in, but Company B has nothing to do with Nextsite, so if they move in, we wouldn't have to pay any kind of find-your-fee, because they didn't, because Nextsite didn't actually, you know, get them to come in, or they just saw someone else that they brokered in, and then they kind of came along for the ride.
Correct. It's only for projects that Nextsite initiated. Mr. Branch did make a comment that if it is a local business, that's already shown interest, or you know, Coach's Corner does a Coach's Corner, too. That was a local business anyway, so it's really just for the ones that they bring in that they initiate contact with. So it would, you know, be beneficial to outlets in front of Walmart. There's outlets in front of the old ShopCo that's, you know, for Rock Valley. Those are, you know, prime outlets that haven't had any interest in. Hopefully, this company could help get those going.
Okay. Alderman Snow?
That being said, I would make a motion that we go with the $15,000 a year plus success fee.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Second by Alderman Stevens. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Stevens. Questions? Alderman Porter?
Yeah, I did have just one quick question. So... So this doesn't, I mean, if we adopt this, our community development department is still going to be working the same amount, right? To try to bring in new businesses?
Yes. And for any business that they can get, community development still has to run them through the zoning and special uses, site plan development. Growth dimensions would still run them through the enterprise zone. So it, it's still a team effort. They're just going to be making the contact and giving them to Belvedere and then kind of handing it over to us to finish it off. And yeah, we'll still be meeting with anyone that wants to meet and actively looking at potential businesses and answering RFPs. It's just the, the bigger ones, the more national ones that rely on analytics. We just, to buy that software and have staff that can run that software, it's cheaper just to go this route. So they're, they're kind of helping on this level and staff will continue working on this level.
Alderwoman Moore?
Thank you. So beyond like connecting like their leads with us, they're kind of out of the picture at a certain point?
Well, so they'll be connecting leads. They could act as land brokers to ensure, you know, the transition of, you know, there's multifaceted. But then when it comes down to, do you need a special use? Do you need to be rezoned? Do you need to be annexed? And that's all zoning matter that staff will handle.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's safe to say that we are going to rely on them to be able to market this community where I guess we can't. And we're going to rely on them to have some of the contacts and some of the other successes that they've had in other communities. Hopefully like Belvedere, that they've had throughout the country. And they're going to be able to, you know, market them based upon they have a working knowledge with them. So I think it puts us at an advantage. I really do. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So I think that hopefully within three years, they can maybe bring in two, three or four new people that then after the three years, we don't need to renew this contract because the new people that they've brought in will automatically draw other things to us.
That would definitely be an end goal. That then we would have that contact with those developers, that that domino effect would have started going. The ball would be rolling and we could use the momentum from there for sure.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, hearing none. We have a motion and a second on the floor, then to go with Next Site, Nikor Next Site Services with option, success fee option of 15,000 a year, plus any depending upon what that retail business looks like. The success fee is according. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion passed. Moving on, item C, Florence Court Reconstruction Bid, Reconstruction Project. Brent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Memo in the packet. We opened bids this past week for the Florence Court Reconstruction Project. We received six bids, a low bid being from Dale's Plumbing Incorporated in the amount of $281,862.20. The engineer's estimate for this project was $200,000, $250,000. So it's a little bit more than the engineer's estimate. And for anybody wondering, Dale's Plumbing Incorporated, that's kind of a combination between the old Slicking and Sons Excavating. Dale's Plumbing's been around since probably the late seventies, I want to say, and also Schoesterman Sons. So it's a, it's a combination effort. They've done quite a bit of work for the city of Rockford and other local municipalities here in the last few years. So we think they are able to handle this project. And therefore I would recommend approval of the low bid from Dale's Plumbing in the amount of $281,862.20 for the Florence Court Reconstruction Project. This work will be paid for from the capital funds.
Okay. Do we have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Stevens. Any discussion? Alderman Snow, then Alderwoman Freeman?
Right by 711. It's, it's basically, it's a 50-foot right away with about a 24, 25-foot pavement width. Right now, it's, it's a dead end, it's basically a glorified alley.
That was, we had that discussion. We had that very discussion. We've had that discussion with both entities being, being NTRAC and Dale's Plumbing. Because of, on Logan Avenue, Commonwealth Edison has, I think, 25 or 26 utility poles that they have to relocate. So the thought process was that Florence Court work mainly consists of the underground work for water and sewer extensions to get those water mains put in and get that work done. So they can be able to start that work as soon as weather permits. So they're, they're thinking they're going to get started hopefully in March. And if Commonwealth Edison starts about that same time doing their pole relocation, by the time that Commonwealth Edison is finished with the pole relocation, the majority of the work on Florence Court will probably be completed. And therefore there won't be a lot of interaction between the two contracts. And for that reason, we thought it was prudent for us in this case to go with the low bid on each project.
Continue. Well, I'll guarantee you that we talked about that and that was exactly my question. And we talked it over and because you're going to have this Florence Court be done and then Logan Avenue, it'll be, you'll have ComEd come in and then you'll be waiting. I don't think that there's going to be like any issue. I think if you're looking at $3,000 and change, it's probably, as Brent said, prudent to go ahead and, in this case, accept a little bid. I don't think that there's going to be any loss of continuity with, with, between the two. So I think they can pick up and right where the other one left off. And we will, we won't save a lot, but we'll save a little bit. So, okay. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So Brent, what is, this is just tying in the water sewer to Logan Avenue, right?
Well, it, it ends up being a complete reconstruction for Florence because of that water and sewer work. Because we only have the 50-foot right away and with the pavement and where we need to put the water and sewer mains up that pavement. Basically everything existing in the right ways can be tore up with the installation of those new water and sanitary sewer mains. So it will have new, it'll have new pavement, it'll have new, because of the, it'll have curbing gutter. It'll have a depressed curb on one side. It will not probably have sidewalks just because of the narrow nature in order to give as much pavement as we can for two-way traffic in there. It was felt that we would be better served with having a wider pavement as opposed to a narrower pavement and sidewalk on both sides. So that is the, it'll be a complete reconstruction, like I said, for the project.
So this has to be done in order to do the Logan, finish the Logan Avenue reconstruction?
Well, not necessarily, but if you're going to take care of the water and sewer, we need to have that done first and get those ties done. Cause it, it basically, it comes off of Logan Avenue. So all the work is tied into Logan Avenue. So that would be the first thing done.
And would this qualify for MFT funds?
No, we're not proposing to use MFT funds on this because like I said, the primary cost of this project is water and sewer. So we would feel that this would be utilized for capital funds. It would qualify for the ARPA, is that what the? It would qualify for the ARPA funds that the city were awarded through the, through the COVID pandemic. But right now, the recommendation would be capital.
Any other questions? All right. Hearing seen none. We have a motion then to approve the low bid of Dale's Plumbing in the amount of $281,862.20 for the Florence Court Reconstruction Project. And those funds, these, this work will be paid from our capital funds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passed. Thank you. Okay. Then we have the item D, Logan Avenue Rehabilitation Project Bid Tabulation. Brent?
Again, thank you, Mayor. Memo in your packet. We had six bidders in for the Logan Avenue Rehabilitation Project. Low bid being from NTRAC Group LLC, which is made up of former employees from Slicking and Sons. That's where NTRAC came from. And the bid was $2,671,812.59. The engineer's estimate for this project was $2,610,000. And just to mention for the council, and we're seeing it on our current projects that we have under contract, as delivery times and material acquisitions are hard to, harder and harder to come by. We're not seeing any relief of that. And so you're seeing some, some associated price increases with that. And I think as long, as long as that keeps to continue, I think probably project costs are going to continue to go up to a certain extent. So overall, you can see by the, by the top bids there and how close they were together. I think the bids are good and accurate and good representation for us. I would recommend approval of the low bid from NTRAC Group in the amount of $2,671,812.59 for the Logan Avenue Rehabilitation Project, subject to IDOT approval. This work will be paid for from MFT and capital funds.
Okay. Do we have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman Stevens and we have a second by Alderman Porter. Any discussions regarding that? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So Brent, we've been talking about this Logan Avenue Rehab Project for like a couple of years. I know that we have to do the sidewalks ADA compliant. I know that in order to do that, we had to acquire additional land. And we need ComEd to do their wires underground. So this $2,671,812.59, what exactly is that going to pay for? Is that tearing up the road, fixing all the pipes, putting the road back? And is this like it? Is this, will this complete this project?
Yeah, it will complete the project. ComEd will not be putting, putting utilities under the ground. We talked about that at one point as, and through the process, but that was so expensive that, that we're, basically they're going to replace, they're going to relocate the poles to allow for the ADA clearance. So yes, this will pay for, for all of the improvements proposed for Logan Avenue. New, everything from the curbing gutter to the property line on either side of the road will be redone, all new. So new sidewalks, new driveway approaches, new terraces, new curbing gutter, storm drain inlets will all be rebuilt. Some centers like five sanitary manholes that will be sealed or partially rebuilt as part of this project. New pavement, new surfacing, new striping. Council previously approved new traffic signals at the East Avenue intersection. So those will be replaced as well. So yes, it'll be the rehabilitation of Logan Avenue.
So we're keeping it four lanes. We're not doing a median down the middle. It'll basically just be revamped brand new, just like it is.
Well, it'll, it's going to have, each of the lanes right now are 12-foot in width and those lanes are going to be reduced to 11-foot in width in order to create the additional terrace space we needed in order to comply with the ADA requirements and what we needed for pole clearances with Commonwealth Edison. So in order to gain those ADA compliance, ComEd has to relocate those poles because we're going to increase that width. So we'll probably end up with about a four-foot uniform terrace on both sides, which you do not see currently.
Alderman Snow?
And just for the public's knowledge, from what intersection to what intersection does all this entail?
The work will go from State Street to Business Route 20. And we will have a public informational meeting set up before project, before the project begins for all the property owners adjacent to, on Logan Avenue to come to get information on. And we'll do the same thing with Florence Court as well. And then just a footnote on the funding, council's already previously approved utilizing the IDOT Rebuild Illinois Funds on this project, which our allotment for that is going to be $1,686,152. So that's what's being paid for out of MFT funds. The balance of $985,660.50 was, will be taken from the capital fund. And keep in mind when, because this project has been in discussions phase for as long as it has, capital funds were being set aside to pay for this project. And the original estimated cost on the project was $2 million. So the, the expense on the capital side will be less than what was originally anticipated because of the Rebuild Illinois Funds that became available to us.
Alderman Stevens?
Since we're talking about long-term stuff, you know, Brent, if you could, after we're done voting on this, talk about the low flannel, low channel flow from Sixth Street down and the Fifth Avenue. Once we're all done, you know, tell us how we're coming and how long we can expect this.
Okay. Is there any other questions regarding the motion and second on the floor? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passed. Thank you.
Regarding the low-flow channel on Sixth Street that continues in the, getting the plan specifications put together for the, for the natural bottom option that the City Council approved, I would anticipate that's going to go out to bid this spring for that work to be done. As far as the Fifth Avenue, the bypass storm sewer on Fifth Avenue, as well as the Fifth Avenue Reconstruction Project, I have received word from Franklin Wire this past week that they are in acceptance of, of the city's desire to acquire a portion of their property for a stormwater detention facility as well as easements on their property to allow for the bypass storm sewer to be constructed across their property, which will allow us then to move forward with the acquisition of that property and easements, as well as the acquisition of the Bungee property to, for our access point to the river on the bypass storm sewer. So in February's Public Works Meeting, I hope to have the memos and information before you to review both of those acquisitions as part of that project.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Brent. Item E, 5E, whistleblower mandate. So the city attorney, this is a boilerplate project, I believe. So turn it over to you.
Another mandate, called unfunded mandate, but hopefully there's no funds necessary, promulgated by the state. We actually probably should have done this last summer, but things slip through the cracks sometimes. Somebody in Springfield thought it'd be a good idea to make sure that municipalities do not retaliate against their employees when they make complaints about what they call improper governmental action, misuse of funds, what have you. It is a poorly drafted piece of legislation because as drafted, it says they're worried about retaliation, but then they put in there that all complaints about any kind of action should be made to the quote auditing official. And they assume that every municipality has somebody whose job it is to investigate things, which of course is not true. And they also gave that auditing official the authority to reinstate people, give them back pay and all kinds of things, which of course we cannot do with a fire and police commission. Cause if a fire and police commission terminates an employee, it's their termination, not ours. So what I've done is using our hormonal authority, I have modified the draft policy somewhat. It adopts the, the policy. It does provide that the city clerk would be the auditing official with the help of myself and/or the chief of police or whoever she needs help from to do an investigation. Provides that any claim of retaliation should be made to her, not just any improper governmental action. You can make a complaint to her, but you know, if somebody has a complaint about a police officer, they can make that complaint directly to the chief as well. And it makes it clear that for employees that are governed by the fire and police And it makes it clear that for employees that are governed by the Fire and Police Commission, which really is more than half our employees, any disciplinary action would be taken by that body, not by us, because we really can't control them. So unfortunately, my recommended motion's incomplete sentence. It should be a motion to amend Chapter forty-three of the City of Belvedere Municipal Code to adopt a new Article Four whistleblower policy as set forth in the attached exhibit.
Okay, motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Stevens. Any questions? Alderwoman Freeman first, then Alderman Snow.
Thank you. Attorney Drela, when I read this, what jumped out at me the most was that we are going to saddle our city clerk with being the auditing official who, you know, initiates an investigation of alleged improper actions, keeping record written of all investigative steps, record written of all interviews conducted, yada, yada, yada. I'm not sure that the city clerk would have the experience or expertise to conduct such an, you know, investigation. And I think that the state's attorney's office has more of the tools and the means to be able to do this because it seems to me that most of this would be like criminal activity anyway.
No, not necessarily. In fact, a lot of it wouldn't be. Majority of it probably would not be criminal activity. The clerk's office is already saddled with a lot of these kinds of things. That, that office is the primary recipient of all complaints regarding sexual harassment and other kinds of activities like that in the city. Claims like this are probably going to be sexual harassment. It could be improper use of funds, but that's one of the reasons why I put in there that she can then defer to myself or the chief or whomever to assist her with the investigative work. One of the concerns I had with, for example, making my office the primary entity, trying to keep kind of a Chinese wall, so to speak, in some cases, it's actually a legal term. If it looks like it's something that there might be a lawsuit over, the statute requires the city clerk to give the employee's attorney all the information that they find. Well, if I represent the city, I can't be the one turning over information to the employee's attorney. It's outright conflict of interest. So you do want, you do need to have somebody within the city to do it. The state's attorney is the fallback if there was none or if the clerk were to look at and say, well, this is criminal activity, give it to the state's attorney. But it's the clerk's discretion to do that and I make sure, make sure that's in there. So if there is something that she does not want to handle or cannot handle, she can either turn that over to somebody within the city to assist her or go to the state's attorney.
Yeah, Alderman, Alderman Snow?
So on page two, that paragraph.
All right, let me, I didn't, did I put, oh wow, I put page numbers on here, good. Okay.
And this is a potential claim, retaliation action, whether the auditing official determines that restitution will not suffice, the auditing official may make the investigation findings available to purchase evasion of employees and their attorneys. I'm wondering, it says may, shouldn't that be shall?
The statute has a shall in there, you're correct.
Should we change that?
I made it a may, I'm suggesting as a home authority to do that, to give us an out in case we want to try and wiggle around a little bit.
So then you're saying, well, then we're not going to give that to you?
Maybe not.
Deploy it or something, or go through the?
If it's subject to deploy, they could certainly do that, unless there's an exception I can use. I shouldn't say aye, the city could use.
Okay, I'm just questioning that. And then the next page, the second paragraph, the last line, it talks about shall forward such reports to the mayor and any other government officials, the auditing being necessary. Did that be mayor and city council and other sovereign officials?
If you want to, it could, that's directly out of the statute.
Because otherwise, we would not be in the loop. And do we want to be in the loop? Is it necessary for us to be in the loop? Or something like this? Because if something comes up, you know, and said, hey, we heard so-and-so, blah, 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 and again, we didn't hear about it, you know, I was.
It's.
Questioning whether or not we should be included in that or if it's going to be.
It's not necessarily required, so it's not a necessity. If you want it to be in there, we could. Keep in mind, I don't see this coming up, but if it does, it's usually going to be insignificant matters. And if it's anything in the matter of significant concern, for example, a lawsuit or something against my, if there was a complaint, a complaint against me, obviously, you might be considering discipline, you might be considering those kinds of things. And that is something that, you know, for example, termination would have to go to the city council. So big things would be coming to you anyway, most likely. There's nothing to prevent the auditing official from providing additional information to the council. It's not required, but if you want it in there, we can put it in there.
Well, I guess we are other governmental officials, but that means that you could be given to the state's attorney, the sheriff's department or whatever.
That's why they wrote the statute that way, that's why they wrote it that way.
Anyhow, I'll leave it alone, I just got a question.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, hearing nothing else, then we have a motion and a second to amend Chapter forty-three of the City of Belvedere Municipal Code to adopt a new Article Four whistleblower policy as set forth in the attached exhibit. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, motion passed. And item F, we have Resolution twenty-two dash seven, release of certain executive session minutes pursuant to five ILCS one-twenty slash sequence. So with that in mind, if you go to the back, if you go to the second page of this, it has the schedule dates that are on top that are going to be, that are not going to be released. And Schedule B, the four that will be released. Do we have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman Porter, second by Alderwoman Prather. Any discussion? I know we had talked about this prior. And that's where an executive session, that's what come out of it, so. Seeing nothing else, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Okay, motion passed, thank you. And last, we have item G, executive session to discuss probable or imminent litigation pursuant to Section two C, eleven of the Illinois Open Meeting Act. Do we have a motion? We need a motion to go into. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderwoman Alderman McGee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Mr. Taboral call.
Oops, I'm sorry. Roll call when the clerk calls a roll. All those in favor, say aye, any opposed, nay?
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Ten in favor?